What would I do without you? Welcome, everybody. My total Marts call the November 15th, 2022 City Council Services Safety and Parks Committee to order. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There's a general public comment opportunity beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period at each of tonight's agenda items. Members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who sign up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. Do this. If you're on the phone, you press star three. If you've joined by computer or smartphone, you can look for a hand icon. This does vary by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. I'll raise a moment to see if anyone wishes to raise their hand. So we'll have speakers here. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Chair Marts, Mr. David Nomura signed up to speak at public comment. Mr. Nomura, did you want to speak at the top of the meeting, or did you want to speak after the staff presentation?
[inaudible]
Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them... Yes, yes. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions we make. Please direct comments to the whole council and not to individuals. While this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, unmute your microphone or step up to the lectern, state your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently. Limit comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called or your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Clerk, can you identify the first person who's signed up to speak? If we have anybody signed up?
Chair Marts, as I indicated, Mr. Nomura signed up to speak previously and would like to wait until the staff presentation, after the staff presentation. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak at this time?
Ms. Marsh, please come to the lectern.
Hi, my name is Connie Marsh, and this is my 30,000-foot comment section. So for the last nearing 30 years, I have been doing this, and I read almost everything. And so when something like, something comes up, I can pretty well say the pros and the cons, and I can pretty well tell you what documents those pros and cons are based in. And then I can usually find the supporting information that's new and, in my own brain, create the argument pro and con and come to some sort of a decision. And so this is, this is what I perceive to be good decision-making and what a government should also be doing. And I miss Mark Hinthorn, who stubbornly took us through the pros and the cons and insisted that the council make a decision knowing the goods and the bads. So it is distressing to me in the last two weeks to have had three different things that have just come up with sort of "we want us" and only with supporting information and not the information that is con. And I don't think you can make wise decisions if you don't understand the things that are not good about something. And so I would ask that you always insist for both sides of the issue. So your thing that's happening tonight is pretty rah-rah, right? It doesn't talk much about the cons of the situation. I'm going to get into that in more detail later, but I wanted you to know that in the overarchingness of what I say, it's how to make a good decision, not that I'm always just that much of a flippin' whiner. Though I am that, but I'm here.
Thank you for your comment. Does anyone else want to speak at this point before we get into tonight's agenda? Anyone online indicated an interest in speaking?
Chair Marts, no one is in attendance online at the moment.
All right. Well, we will then proceed. Approval of the minutes. Minutes from October 18th. Does anyone care to make a motion in regards to the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That carries three to oh. The minutes are approved. We move to ID 1298 TOD Project Tibbetts Valley Park Cell Tower Lease with our Deputy City Administrator Snyder.
Good evening, council. I'm Andrea Snyder, Deputy City Administrator, and we have two things for your consideration tonight. I've somewhat combined the presentations just because the background is very similar and trying to streamline them, but we will be going through each item one at a time. With me also in support, should you have any questions that I can't answer, we have Dan Landis from King County Housing Authority, who's here, Dave Nomura, who's from Lumen, and a number of staff, including Director Jeff Watling. We also have the city attorney who has been helping us with these agreements as well. So I may, at some point, decide to phone a friend, and just wanted to thank those individuals for being here tonight and helping with this presentation. So the first item that we are going to talk about this evening is the draft lease for Tibbetts Valley Park and the potential to locate a cell tower at that park site. Sorry about that. So purpose of this evening regarding the lease is, first, to update the city council on the TOD project or Transit Oriented Development Project and the Opportunity Center. I apologize in advance. You're going to hear quite a few acronyms thrown out, and I'm going to do my best to slow down and make sure to spell out what those acronyms say, but certainly if you catch me saying something that I haven't spelled out yet, please, please ask questions and interrupt me. And so first, we'll providing an update on where we are today with that project and also seek the council committee input on this potential lease for Tibbetts Valley Park. Again, for a cell tower to be relocated from what we've identified as the future Transit Oriented Development TOD and Opportunity Center site. So we're looking for direction first from council on should the administration continue to negotiate with Vertical Bridge, that's the operator of that cell tower, on a lease for the telecommunications tower to support the TODOC project? And if yes, then are there any additional terms the council would like represented in those negotiations? Little bit of background, we've been at this project for a long time, so those who've been following this project are familiar with the city released an RFP, I believe it was in 2016, looking for partners to develop a mixed-use, mixed-income project, what we call the TODOC, next to the Issaquah Transit Center. There's a lot more details in the project than that, but I'm trying to be concise for the purposes of this evening. The city then selected King County Housing Authority, or KCHA, and Spectrum Development Solutions to be the development partners for this project. As of today and recently, Spectrum's no longer a partner in this project, but certainly had worked on it for many years alongside KCHA. The current property owner, known as Lumen, formerly known as Century Link, of the future TODOC site requires that the cell tower that's currently on that property to have their relocation site secured before they'll transfer ownership of that future TODOC site to KCHA. So there's a lot of moving pieces. Again, please ask questions if it starts to get too confusing. I'm going to try to make it as clear as possible. And so basically, there's a cell tower on that site, and the property cannot be redeveloped with that cell tower in the location that it is, so it needs to be moved. And the current owner, Lumen, is requiring that their future relocation site is secured before they're willing to sell the property. Okay. Again, just as a reminder of what that project was originally conceived as when we put out that RFP and got responses and started our partnership with King County Housing Authority, this is the project as originally conceived. Here's a map as well on this slide. You can see SR 900 running north and south on the map on the left-hand side. And then highlighted in this drawing is the, next to the Transit Center, is the future site of the TODOC. This is a concept, and that concept included two buildings with a total of 355 residential units and some commercial space, including 10,000 square feet, that we've identified as the Opportunity Center, which would be essentially a human services campus providing health and behavioral health services for low-income people. And in addition, we have been talking about 175 or more affordable units at 40% to 80% of AMI. That's the project as we'd been talking about it for years and was originally conceived, just brief summary. You can also see in this map immediately to the south is Tibbetts Valley Park.
Actually, I have a question. You said 40 to 80? Was it 40 to 80 or 40 to 60? I thought I read in the literature 40 to 60.
Yeah. In our original, this is the original concept, we were talking about 40 to 80%. King County Housing Authority has since come back and is looking at more affordable units, so 40 to 60%. And I don't know if, Dan, you'd like to clarify on this point at all?
Sure.
Can you come up to the microphone, please, Dan? Thank you.
Dan Landis, King County Housing Authority. So the original plan was that Spectrum on their portion of the parcel was going to have some 80% units, so 20 of the 175 units are the Spectrum, what Spectrum was proposing, we were proposing to build 155, which would be at 40 and 60% of AMI.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. So that's, the project is originally conceived. Also, more background, we, the city had formed a non-binding memorandum of understanding, MOU, outlining the roles, responsibility, and expectations of each of the project partners, including Spectrum, that's no longer a partner. That, since, you know, there's, we've been at this project for many years, there's been a lot of twists and turns and changes. When we had formed the MOU, we considered that to be a precursor to a development agreement. That development agreement is no longer required. The city's role in this project has shifted, and, kind of fast-forwarding now to modern-day, the city is considering this lease of Tibbetts Valley Park for a cell tower. And that's because we've evaluated all the other relocation sites for this cell tower. We've looked at everything. It took us two years to really perform an exhaustive search, and really the only suitable site that we have been able to identify is Tibbetts Valley Park. There's more information and background on this in the written materials for this evening. I'm really hitting the highlights in this presentation. The city, as we look at the negotiations for the lease for the city park, we also consider public benefits of this TODOC project as parcel compensation for the city land lease. And so that's why these two items are for your consideration tonight. The one is the city land lease, and then future, later on tonight, we're going to talk about the King County Housing Authority agreement, the interlocal agreement with them. So again, here is the map of the area. Highlighted in yellow is that future TOD site. In fact, on that map, I think you can see the shadow from the cell tower that's existing on the site. And then across the street, to the south, we have Tibbetts Valley Park. Marked in, with a red X, to the south of that parking lot is the approximate location of the relocation site for that cell tower. And again, as I said, we've looked, really performed an exhaustive search in the area, including, you know, other cell tower sites the city has and operates, and really this was the only one that we could find that would match all of the criteria for that cell tower to operate. So the proposal for your consideration is a lease of a portion of the Tibbetts Valley Park as the relocation site for the cell tower and its supporting equipment. So you can see in this picture, this is kind of a conceptual drawing of what it could look like, giving an idea of what the visual impacts and approximate location of that facility to be. We still need to do work with Vertical Bridge, the operator of that cell tower, on the exact design of the building, of the supportive structure for that, that cell tower. So that's still in the works, but this kind of gives an approximation of what we could expect. As you can see, it's in a tucked-away part of, of the park. It's meant to be out of the way of future uses and really trying to limit the impacts on the recreational uses of the park. So main points of this lease, again, there's a lot in the lease that's been included in the packet, but just hitting the highlights for you, main points would be that the rent would be 20% revenue share, which we estimate at this point to be approximately 1,800 a month. Like I said before, additional compensation would be provided via the public benefits from the TODOC project. Just the housing, the affordable housing component alone that KCHA is prepared to provide has an estimated value of 41 million over the lifetime of that project. The length of the term of the lease at this point is 25 years. That's what the administration has proposed, and Vertical Bridge is seeking to bargain for an additional five years to that lease. They would prefer it be 30 years. The tower would be 85 feet tall in compliance with Issaquah Municipal Code, and the administration, as I said before, would approve final design as the landowner before permit application. So we have two hats we're wearing in this project. One is as the landowner and the other as the regulator for this project, which comes in permits and code compliance, et cetera. So as the landowner, we would have final approval of design to make sure that it meets those park aesthetics that we're really looking for. So as I said before, what's still under negotiation with this lease, there are a couple of things. Vertical Bridge, as I said, wants a 30-year term instead of 25. Another concept is this idea of a tournament. So Vertical Bridge wants the ability for the city to assume their subleases, subleases meaning all the antennae that attach to the tower. So Vertical Bridge wants the ability for the city to assume their subleases with those, with those companies like T-Mobile and the other antenna operators, and for the city to operate the tower in case Vertical Bridge dissolves and is unable to sell the city lease to another provider similar to Vertical Bridge. So something were to happen to Vertical Bridge and they dissolve, and for whatever reason, we're not able to sell their assets to another provider, that the city would then take over operation of that, of that tower. So that's, that's something that we're still negotiating with them on. And then finally, they also would like, should Vertical Bridge dissolve and their lender assume their assets, then that city would provide the same lease terms to their lender, should the lender take over the lease. So that's another thing that they would like from us that we're still negotiating about. With each of those things comes different levels of risk, and so we're working through some of those. Options generally for you this evening is to move forward with the lease negotiations and continue talking to Vertical Bridge. Again, feedback of the committee is very welcome and would help shape the negotiations on this lease. Or, or direction would be to not move forward with the lease negotiations at Tibbetts Valley Park. And should that be the direction from council tonight, in either case, we would bring, bring the item to the next regular city council meeting for city council's consideration. So that's what we would recommend. And the, the city, I'm sorry, the administration's recommendation for this evening regarding those two options is to continue the lease negotiations and bring the lease to the next city council meeting for their consideration. We believe this is the best option to support the DOT, TODOC project, and if the council were to direct us not to move forward with those negotiations, not to move forward with this lease agreement, then that would likely end the possibility of that TODOC project as we have been working on and conceived. So that concludes the presentation. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Marts. Do we have any other cell towers on city land?
Yes. Yes. We have, maybe Eileen can chime in in terms of how many leases that we have. We operate, we have a number of leases. They're typically on utility sites, so they're on water tower sites in different parts of the city. And Eileen, oh, I'm sorry, I just saw Eileen pop up. Do you want to say how many we have?
Sure.
Very quietly.
I apologize for that. I apologize for that. I hope you guys can hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. All right. Thank you. Thank you, committee. Glad to be here this evening. I don't have an exact figure for you, but, you know, as we've been working through all of the various telecom matters in the city, I'd estimate between, I don't know, eight to 10, maybe even a few more. So actually, quite a few leases in Issaquah, so this is not new. Leasing for telecom towers is not new to Issaquah staff.
Cool. And the terms for those leases similar to what we're talking about with Vertical Bridge?
This is a unique lease. So for example, the rental provision that Andrea highlighted earlier is very much different than what the city would normally, how the city would normally structure rent. In Issaquah, we typically see a, an upfront payment as well as a monthly or annual payment, generally calculated on a per-square-foot basis. Here, here what is anticipated is a pass-through of sublease rent from Vertical Bridge's subleases, so the antenna companies that Andrea mentioned earlier. So it would be quite a different situation in this, in this circumstance. So you would have a variable rent that, you know, and no guarantee, you know, if Vertical Bridge had no subleases, then, you know, at that particular time, we would not be getting rent from them. Additionally, additional compensation has been, we've been looking at the, the benefits of the TOD project. I believe KCHA could speak to that, but it's something, you know, the, I think, $40 million range. And additionally too, Vertical Bridge has agreed to allow the city with, you know, with certain caveats, to cite emergency equipment on the tower if, if the city found a need to. So kind of looking at rent in this particular lease in a, in a calculated and paid in a, in a much different way than we normally would under a normal lease.
Do you have any kind of rough numbers on the difference between a similar lease in terms of total annual revenue in this one?
Annual revenue? I would have to look at that and get back to you. I do know that, I think, monthly rent, the estimate was at something like 1,800. I think that was monthly. I defer to the program materials, but typical, I will say, what we've seen in two of the most recent leases is, I think, fair market value of something like $30 a square foot annually. But then again, that doesn't take into consideration the big upfront payments. So it's a bit hard to do apples to apples, but if council committee is looking for, you know, annual lease, you know, just what we're looking at aggregate annually, I could pull those numbers and, and email them to you offline.
That would, that would be nice, and I think that the whole council would like to see that before it comes back. And then you can just amateurize the upfront money across the 30 years, so, you know, just cover it that way. I have a couple of others. Do you want me to keep going, or you want me to?
Keep going.
Okay. Is there an alternative to an 85-foot pole?
85 feet is the maximum height per city code. So, and 85 feet also is the approximate height of the current lights that are in the park. So there's lights that vary at different, different heights, but 85 feet is, is about what most of the lighting is in the park.
Well, thank you for teeing up the lighting, because that was my next question. So are those ballfields lit at Tibbetts Valley?
Yes, I believe some of them are, and maybe Jeff Watling can speak in more detail. We do have lights at the park.
Yes, all five fields are lit.
Cool. So I'm just kind of going down a rabbit hole, so bear with me. Would it be possible to move the tower over and use it as a lighting fixture so it doesn't kind of stand out quite so overtly?
So I can, I can speak to that a little bit. We, we can attach lights to that pole to provide additional lighting for the parking lot, so that's something that's within the lease and our ability to do that. Moving the pole to a more centralized location within the park, we did consider that. We thought that there are some downsides to that. First, it might be a little bit in the way. That park is kind of tightly programmed with the way that the fields are situated at this point, so finding a good centrally located place for it and the supportive structure, because it's not just a pole, it has to come with that supportive structure that provides cabinetry and other things that support the antenna on the pole. So to find a good location for that is a little bit difficult, kind of in the way. And we're concerned that should the park redevelop in the future, Tibbetts Valley Park is undergoing a master plan, and so should the park redevelop, putting it in a more centralized location would increase the likelihood that we would need to relocate that tower and the supportive structure with the redevelopment of the park. So we're trying to find a tucked-away location that isn't in the middle of, of the recreational uses. According to the draft lease, if the city were to require the cell tower to be relocated from its location in the park to another location, if we redevelop the park, then the city would have to cover the cost of that relocation. And we estimate those costs present day to be about 700,000 to 800,000.
Wow. Last question. How big is that supportive building, in a, in square feet-wise?
Yeah, great question. So we don't have final numbers from them, but Gene, I think, has, has some draft numbers that we've been given. The conversation has ranged pretty, pretty widely since we started these conversations with Vertical Bridge, but perhaps Gene Paul can remind me what the, what the square footage is of that supportive structure, at least for the last estimate that we've received.
Sure. And good evening, members of the committee. I'm Gene Paul, Management Analyst in the Executive Office. The last sketch that's included in the packet had a 12-by-40 supportive building, so about 480 square feet would be used for that structure.
Wow. Okay, great. Thanks, Gene. Just bigger than I expected, but what do I know? All right, that's what I got for right now. Thank you very much. And a nice job orchestrating the responses, Andrea.
Councilmember Jim Michelle, do you have any questions?
No, thanks. No.
I have a couple. So you mentioned building it per code, so would this require any variances or any other executive stuff?
Would this, would the cell tower and its supportive structure require any variances? To my knowledge, no. Our, our efforts with this whole project, including the TODOC project, is to, to not have those types of variances, to really develop it according to the code as, as the code states.
All right. Thank you. What is, we had received some public comment on this, and there was a question around the public process, and what's the public process for this level of a project? And can you sort of describe where this fits in our public process model?
Yes, and please follow up with additional questions if I don't explain it clearly. So I think originally, when we started down this road of the TOD project, we had So I think originally, when we started down this road of the TOD project, we had envisioned that we would do a development agreement. And we could do, we could require that development agreement because the city was, was contributing another property. So we were going to provide, if you recall, the RV park property as a relocation site for Lumen's operations. Last year, Lumen let us know that they did not need that property to relocate their operations, that they were planning on leaving Issaquah altogether. And so that meant that Issaquah was no longer a party within the purchase and sale agreements. So previously, because we were gifting this city land for Lumen to relocate, we were part of the purchase and sale agreement with King County Housing Authority, Spectrum Development, and Lumen. So once we did not gift, once the requirement was lifted of us to gift this land for the, for the project, we, our role changed. So our role changed from being a party to the purchase and sale agreement to more of a facilitative role and trying to make, trying to help this development occur. And once that happened, we really lost our leverage to be able to require a development agreement. And so the process then changed. Our, our public input process changed. And KCHA does not want a development agreement. Instead, they're here with an inter-local agreement that we'll be discussing later this evening. And we cannot force them to do a development agreement. And so that changes the nature of the public engagement. At this point, the project is very similar to a typical private development that would happen in the city. So it would follow those same processes of public engagement as any other private development would, since KCHA would be the property owner.
And, and my last question, this is probably a Jeff Watling question, so I'm giving him heads up right now. We, we actually had a similar thing to this a few years ago. We were looking at putting a tower at Confluence Park on Rainier Boulevard North. And I remember it because I actually flew my drone to see the height involved and to see what the visual impact would be of such a thing. And so I was going to ask if Director Watling remembers, because I don't know if even while he was here at that point, if he remembers that and what the public process was and if there were any issues or concerns around that.
Good evening, Councilmember Martz. I, I do not remember the specifics, specifics of that, of that request. I, I think a note I would make about the specifics of this request, this is not a cell tower consideration we're making just for the sake of a cell tower consideration. This is a consideration that's really being explored solely because of, as Andrea said, the proposed private project across the street and the need to, to move the cell tower.
All right. Thank you. I, I mean, I, I know we considered it, like I said, because I actually went over and flew my drone. It was a Keith Niven special for something we were doing. I just don't remember what it was. Do you remember, Chris? All right. Well, never mind. Thanks anyways. Any other questions? Councilmember Ray.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on that a little bit. Because, I mean, irregardless of why we're doing it, I mean, we're taking a chunk of parkland and we're repurposing it. And so I'm just, I'm just trying to grapple with, you know, what, what kind of public engagement should there be so that the public knows that we're doing this and they have an opportunity to opine about what they think of it? Because I can guarantee you that it's going to get built and people are going to be like, where, where the heck did that come from? And, and all that. So I just was, you know, if this was, you know, let's just, because we can factor this back into the equation, let's say it had nothing to do with the Lumen property. What would normally be our process for dealing with a piece of parkland like that if we wanted to, to repurpose it? Or develop it?
Jeff, would you like to try to answer that question?
Sure. It's an excellent question. I, I would say if this was a, a parks-led project, or as you, as you suggest, Councilmember Ray, a, a consideration of repurposing or reusing public land, yeah, I think there would be a series of public engagements, depending on what the consideration is for, for that repurposing or for that, or for that park use. Whether it's part of, whether, if it was part of a capital project, right? There would be sort of the public engagement effort that's happening with a specific capital project. I'm sorry, I, I don't have, you know, specifics of, of what every precise project would or process would look like. But again, if it was, if it was a consideration solely driven by the, the city and consideration of repurposing park property, yeah, there would be, there would be some type of public engagement.
Great, thanks, Jeff.
And, and I guess what, this really relates back to my question about Confluence Park. And if we, if we move forward today with a recommendation to bring this back to the full council, I guess I would suggest that we take a look at what that process was when we were considering putting towers at Confluence, because it, it would, I think, be right on the nose for what you were talking about. And it was such a small process that you don't remember it. But we'll see. But I think that, I think that would be useful to answer, that might be useful to answer that, partially answer that question. I'm sorry? Oh, Councilmember DeMichele.
But I think that we've made really clear in the materials that there is, the reason we are doing this and the driving factor is the TOD project and the, so, and I know you touched on this earlier, but I'll just ask the question so that we say it again. We have a, a large public benefit because that's the reason that's, that we're looking at this. So would you go over the, the estimated public benefit that we would be getting from this project if we were to agree to go into negotiations over this cell phone tower?
Yes. Thank you. So what the public benefit was estimated to be, and maybe, Dan, you can kind of come up and, and talk about your methodology, but $41 million worth of the affordable housing component of this project. And that's just the part of the project that KCHA would, would build. So we anticipate there would be still two buildings on that property. And so just out of that one building that KCHA would build likely first, that, that'd be $41 million worth. And Dan, can you remind me, over the course of how many years?
So any housing we build will be affordable permanently at those rates.
And in addition to that, there is the 10,000-square-foot Opportunity Center, which the KCHA would construct. The city is still required to help and assist with that construction financially. But we would in turn then be gifted a commercial condo for the city to lease out to partners that would provide human services. So, so that would be, that's another public benefit as part of this project. Other, other things to come, I think, is reserved space, is space for the Leo House Life Enrichment Opportunities. And, and so there's space set aside specifically for them to provide housing to those for an adult family type setting. And other benefits that we contemplate with this project, but that still have yet to be defined, include, we've talked about a public plaza and what that would look like. We would still need to define that and finalize the details. There, the Central Issaquah Plan calls for a road to be put into the east of this property. And so we would look to KCHA to provide some of their land so that we could construct a new road and help, help complete the grid within Central Issaquah and on the valley floor, the transportation grid. That's also included into this project. And those are just some of the benefits. With, with, I think, the main one being the, the affordable housing and the levels of affordability within this housing project are certainly unique.
And just a quick follow-up. It might be confusing for our members of the public to talk about a condominium. It's, it's really more of a term that applies to the agreement about who runs that, if I'm saying that correctly, so.
That, that's correct. It would be a commercial condominium. So it would be a space that the city would have ownership of, and we would be in a condominium agreement with KCHA so that we could own that space and decide how the city would like to lease it out to partners or potentially sell that condominium space.
Thank you very much.
I'll ask one more question. And there was, there was a point in the five-year story history here where there was talk of having a childcare facility on-site that would be separate from the Opportunity Center. Is that not, is that no longer part of the plans?
Well, so we, the project team would still need to understand what the other part of this project would look like, right? So we had two partners, Spectrum Development Solutions and King County Housing Authority, who were partnering on this project. King County Housing Authority was to develop the affordable housing building that included the commercial condo or that Opportunity Center. Spectrum Development Solutions was to develop a little bit more market rate, or as Dan Landis said earlier, that 80%. And so Spectrum has, has removed themselves from this partnership, and now King County Housing Authority is considering, what does that second building look like? Who are potential partners for that building? So that second building was going to have the daycare center in it. So I think, you know, this project has had many permutations and partners over the years. It's still an identified need within Issaquah. KCHA still understands that's something that we would really value and the community needs. So, you know, if we can make it happen, that would be great, but we need to identify future partners before we can make any guarantees.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray.
One last question, and it's probably not much of a question really, but it's just to complete the picture, which is the negotiations with Lumen and Vertical Bridge need to be completed by the end of the year. And that's driving a lot of what, what we're, we're talking about. We just haven't said that. So I wanted to say that, you know, to, to provide context, that we're, we're a little bit jammed up right now.
Thank you, because I have been meaning to say that and I, I keep forgetting. So yes, that is a major, major driver of this project and why we're here today. Lumen has indicated that they really need to sell this property, and they have other offers. And they have offers that are willing to provide much greater in price. And those other offers, according to Lumen, don't need to move that cell tower. And so at this point, we're very grateful for Lumen to stay engaged with us on this, on this opportunity. And, you know, if this were to continue and be a prolonged process, then we would lose Lumen's engagement with us, and we would lose their partnership, and they would likely sell the property to an entity that was willing to pay a little bit more.
I said that was my last question, and I lied.
Trickster.
Just to confirm, we've explored putting the cell tower essentially where it is right now in the new developed site, and that's not feasible?
Correct. We have, we have looked at it in every possible way. Like I said, we've examined this for two years and reexamined it and reexamined it. So one option we considered was to relocate the cell tower or the associated antennae on top of the building. Another option was for us to relocate the cell tower just to a different part of the parcel and still have it be a freestanding structure. We've looked at locating antennae on, on light poles on the street. We've looked at locating antennae on other utility parcels the city owns. We've looked at locating it on the Fire Station 72 that's adjacent. We've looked at all of these things, and there's a number of criteria that we need to, that we need to apply to a future cell tower location site. We need to look at, we need to look at considerations for residents and how close cell towers are to residents. That's a factor. We look at, at the carriers themselves. So all of Vertical Bridge's subtenants like T-Mobile and Verizon and whomever else, they have requirements for where those antennae are posted and the coverage that the community enjoys as a result of the cell tower. And so unfortunately, all those other locations did not meet those requirements, and Tibbetts Valley Park really seemed to be the only one that met all of the requirements.
Done for real.
Are you sure? All right. Thank you. Well, do you have any other material to present before we open up to public comment?
Thank you, Councilmember. Not at this time. I do just want to remind you that we still have one other topic to discuss, the, the KCHA lease. So the, the main question for us tonight is what, what do we do about the cell tower lease, potential for cell tower lease at Tibbetts Valley Park? Thank you.
Yes, the first half of the, yes.
Yes, great.
We're only, we're only taking, yes. This is, this is but the first of two parts. With that, I will ask if any, first of all, do we have any members of the community online that have indicated a desire to speak?
Chair Martz, Dale Leonard is on the line. Mr. Leonard, did you wish to speak on this topic? If you would like to speak on this, please indicate either in the chat or by raising your hand. No indication.
All right, then I will open it to, that if anyone present this evening wishes to speak, now would be a great opportunity if you'd come to the lectern.
Evening, City Councilmembers, staff. Steve Pereira, living in Old Town for, I don't know, 14-ish years. So I sent in a number of inputs on the question. I don't want to repeat all those. I'm hoping you'll address those as part of your deliberations, otherwise I'm wasting everybody's time. I would like to see kind of a, here's all the pluses, here's all the minuses, what's the cost, what's the benefit, what's the public gain for each of those deliberated and defined? What's, what's the benefit of Leo? What's the benefit of the units? What are the number of units? What are the benefits to the park system by having a cell tower on there, having to postpone city park development because of that cell tower location? What's the risk of the cost? What's the risk of the benefits of the additional lease requirements that the contract site wants to put in? I haven't heard you address any of those inputs so far, so I just keep hearing the negatives outweigh the benefits that I keep hearing, and I don't hear anybody asking in a position of authority, ours, our elected representatives, to address those. So I'm really here kind of learning, put a positive spin on it, but I'm not hearing what I'd like to hear as due diligence, due diligence on the part of my elected representatives. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. Actually, kind of three related topics here. The Osprey issue on cell phone towers and lighting on Tibbetts Valley Park needs to be considered that, what can be done to design it so it doesn't become an Osprey nest site and the problems with that? I don't know why you didn't paint the building green in your diagram. That would help, but. And what about parking? If there's an emergency in the middle of the night, there'll be plenty of parking for the crews to work at the tower in the daytime when crews are going to be potentially doing regular work on it. It's, are you going to have reserved parking space or is there going to be an enclosed gated part, which takes possibly more land than the, the building where, so we know that crews can effectively work there? So I just want that consideration. My two biggest issues with the, the city for decades has been the, the property over by the Public Works area. And to give away the, the RV park was, was a terrible idea, and I'm glad it's not in the process. If we're talking about saving parks and that kind of thing, you know, the biggest addition in parks and the valley floor is going to be where the city parks, the, the park department's trucks and their site there, which we want to have as part of Confluence Park. Well, their site, the only, where would you put the kinds of machinery and trucks and all of that? The site is over there where the RV park is. And also, we're going to be needing more space over time for our water, sewer, storm water, da-da-da-da-da, facilities. So I was totally against this project as long as... So I was totally against this project as long as it was taken out our future locations for that use as the city. Would be very difficult to find other places to do it on. My other issue is the location of the Mountain de Sound Greenway Trail. I don't believe it should be on Newport in this particular area we're talking about. I believe it's already where there's an expanded sidewalk on Maple. Also, Maple is a wider rideaway than Newport. And if you want to take down all the trees on Tibbetts Valley Park's south, north edge there to make room for the Mountain de Sound Greenway Trail and all the other traffic improvements that admittedly is needed there, it will be the fight of the decade, I think, in the community. And there's no reason we need to take those trees down if we can get the Mountain de Sound Greenway Trail located over on Maple. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, Connie Marsh again. So I've repeatedly heard we have been looking for a place for a new cell tower for two years, two years, two years. And we've been doing this since, I don't know, 2014? Is that what that was? Yet there was no time for a public conversation. And I've been through this with the city many times. We wait and wait and wait and wait and then we have to make a decision because we're over a barrel and now we no longer have time for the community conversation. The community conversation I was expecting was not about a cell tower. It was about the community dollars being used for an Opportunity Center and for a transit-oriented development that was going to be a community project between King County and the city. And that is the public engagement that we needed to have. If you ask the people in this city if this transit-oriented development even exists, 98% of them are going to say, I have no idea what you're talking about. So I am, I think it's inappropriate to have something of this scale that could have a lot of benefit to a lot of people, be entirely hidden and then expect council to make a decision without these people's voices. And I got to say, I'm not surprised. I'm just disappointed because I've asked every two months for the last four years for information on this, a variety of people. And here we are. We're under the gun. We have to vote because we need to be done by the end of 2022. So interestingly, simultaneously, we are working on our Title 18 and the best available science now says that the buffers for salmonid bearing streams are 150 feet. So if you look at the Tibbetts Creek buffer at 100 feet, this cell tower is out of the buffer. But if you look at what our current best available science says, it is in the buffer as is the corresponding hut. So I asked the question, is this project going to be vested by a council decision? And the answer was no. So you cannot describe what the process will be without understanding if this is going to be in the buffer, because we don't know yet. And that is an oncoming decision that has gotten a lot of public review. So I don't, I, 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 the process, as I keep sending you what a major modification in a, in a master plan is, it, it's clear to me that this is a major modification. The city is somehow interpreting it as a minor modification. I'm not sure how, because that is actually a Development Services Department decision further along in the process. So let's go back to my original comment. When I said, if I look at this from 60,000 feet, you have to have the appropriate real information to make a decision. So this may be for the next topic, but is this actually transit-oriented development anymore or is this an affordable housing project? Because before, it was going to be this combined mixed-use variety of people living in a place, pretty much the definition of what you would expect a transit-oriented development to be, which is getting people out of their cars, which is, which is the point. So now I am going to, to stop. I didn't hear any, most of these things addressed by your questions, so I'm hoping maybe that will come up after we're done talking and I will continue on the broader topic next.
Thank you. And I did forget to ask if anyone here had signed up to speak on this topic.
Yes, Chair Marts. David Namura had signed up to speak.
My apologies.
Mr. Chair, members of the council, thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is David Namura. I'm the Director of Governor Ferris for Lumen. Just here to support the efforts that the city is going through in discussing this project. You know, as Andrea's mentioned, this has been a project that's been in the works for many years, most of which I've been a part of. And, you know, I think we're coming to the end. We still have a little bit of work to do, but I think we're coming to the end of what's been a long collaborative process that's going to have a lot of public value. And so we hope, from Lumen's standpoint, that we can move forward with this and hopefully close this deal soon and provide this public benefit for the greater community. So we appreciate the time and consideration.
Thank you for your comment. And now to deliberation. So the issue at hand is, do we wish to recommend to continue lease negotiations and bringing the lease to the next regular city council meeting for consideration or not? And I will let one of you two lead us off. Councilmember Ray.
I'll get to start. Deputy City Administrator, will you throw up, put up on the screen again, the three areas that are still being negotiated? I think you had those somewhere in the, there we go. So I'm going to, I'm going to start taking the easy ones. I don't have a big, strong preference between 25 or 30 years, so from my perspective, either is fine. I think the eternment is interesting. I don't have any objection to doing that, so if they go for that, that's fine. And nor do I have a problem with new, new lease or for lenders, for new lease for lender if the Vertical Bridge wants the city to provide the same lease terms. I think that's fine. So I took the easy part first. This is hard. I mean, this is really, really hard and it's, it's hard for a lot of the reasons that we've been discussing. It's, it's hard because the Transit Oriented Development Opportunity Center is something that we have been talking about for a long, long time. And, you know, there have been disagreements on what its scope should be, but by and large there's, there's pretty broad support, at least from this, well, I don't know, yeah, this city council, to move forward with this. I, I have paused though, because I feel like we're in a position of having to make a decision without public input on the tower because of the time constraints. So I'm, I'm, I'm very, I'm very conflicted about this, because I recognize that if we say no, you're not just saying no to a tower, you're saying no to TOD. And so it's a, it's a double no. And, and so that's got a lot of weight and a lot of power. So I really don't know. So I am, I am turning to my most esteemed colleagues here on this committee to help me figure out what the heck direction to go.
Councilmember Michelle, do you want to go next?
I, I will. Thank you very much. So I support approving, approving, moving, I'm sorry, I'll start over again. I support moving ahead with negotiations. I emailed Andrea earlier today and just to, to me, reading through the packet materials, the most significant sentence in there was that the role of the city has changed. We, when Lumen decided that they did not need another parcel of land in Issaquah, that significantly changed our role. We are no longer a partner on this project. We are, as you said, a facilitator. That means that we are in a completely different place in terms of conducting public outreach because it's no longer really our project. And so I think that needs to be clear. We're not operating where we were five years ago or three years ago even. We are in a much different place. And I don't think it would even be appropriate for us to take on a role of doing public outreach or conducting public outreach on a project in which we really do not have a partnership role any longer. So, so that to me is, is one reason why, first of all, I'm very grateful to everybody who has stayed on board this project, because it has been a really long and very significantly changed. I wanted, I was really glad to see Mr. Landis here. And your letter was so clear and I know it went, it's really attached to the next item that we're going to take up, but I do want to commend you for the clarity of going through the project, piece by piece by piece by piece. It is not a rah-rah letter in any sense of the word. It is, to me, it's a description of everything that can go wrong and still command the commitment of Arch and King County Housing Authority and the city and Lumen. And to me, it was just a wonderful statement of all the things that we've gone through to get to this point. And that commitment is still there. And one of the reasons it's still there is because there is a crying need for affordable housing and there is also a crying need in our community for someplace to provide human services. And that's the interest that the city has in that condominium piece of the project. So I've been thinking a lot about my dad today. We were talking earlier. He had a saying, he was, it was in for a dime, in for a dollar. And he was raised during the depression, so right now I suppose that would be in the millions. But we made a commitment, or not we, but a council in 2015 and 2017 made a commitment to this project, put out RFPs, took, took applications for people, made agreements. And we cannot, at this point, give up those agreements. We have significant resources that have been pledged to this project that need to be honored. And the commitment, the long-term commitment, thank you, Mr. Landis, has, needs to be honored. And so I think that we should move ahead with negotiations and, and hopefully we come to a really significantly good place with Lumen. So thank you.
Thank you. So let me, let me address downsides first. Can you please put up the picture, the notional view of what it might look like at this, at the south end of the parking lot? Thank, oop, nope, the last one. You were there a second ago. There we go. So, you know, Chris, I understand the question about the location. I actually think there's a better location than putting it in the middle of the park. I think near, I've flown my drones around there too. And that, that is about how tall the trees are, because my normal return to home height from my drone doesn't work in that area because they're taller trees. So, you know, if you're going to have to put an antenna in the park, actually, this looks better than I thought it was going to look. And I realize it won't look exactly like this, but it seems to be, as far as locations go, a good location. Don't have to worry about kids trying to hit home runs and hit it, which is one of the things I was concerned about. Parking, a question was raised about parking. We actually have materials in the, in the packet tonight that talks about. We have looked at the parking and access issues in relation to the parking lot. The administration doesn't feel that's a problem. I want to address this question about timing and why we have to do it right now. And while I certainly recognize there are municipal governments in this area that, that try to use the clock to get things done, this city generally, generally doesn't. And this was really around kind of a breakthrough in the situation that occurred around this timing. And I'm quite confident this was not an intentional effort to come before us at the last minute, but really having the situation thankfully change. So I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Let's talk about the community benefit of this. I came on council 13 years ago and we wanted a Opportunity Center. And we said we needed it and we had $2 million in the bank. And we looked 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 and we looked. And I can't stress enough how hard we looked and how many locations and partnering with At Work and buying a commercial building that we would share or going in with the fire department or just, we looked at so many areas and it, this has been, what this comes down to tonight ultimately, is whether you, what benefit you see to the TOD and to the Opportunity Center. And I have been on board with this project since day one, because I came on council, hearing from the community about an Opportunity Center, touring the Together Center, which is, which is about to, has got a new facility that they're opening up, understanding what that means to Redmond, understanding what having those sorts of facilities would mean in this community. And that, to me, has been as big of a part of this as the transit-oriented development itself. They were, they're both important. This transit-oriented development is super important. Forty to 60% is a great target. It's a great place to be able to have folks who could afford to live here in a time when the market rate stuff is at, you know, 140 to 180% of AMI. So I'm just, I, it comes down to, if you see that benefit, then all, all we've done in the last year is make this easier, right? Make this product, process easier. As one comment was, you know, we had a complicated land swap that would have involved trading some, some very valuable real estate. We considered doing that. I think we had a majority of council that would have supported it. This is so much easier to do than that. So for all those things, it, like I said, it really comes down to, if you don't see a benefit to it, then there's, you know, a million individual issues. But if you see the benefit, then the costs associated with this are really light and it's a really huge opportunity. I just, I think Lumen has been extraordinarily patient through all this and I want to thank them for five years of, of helping us figure this out and working with their, with their tenant, but, and, and the administration's effort to continue this through. And so I'm, I'm, I will be supporting it tonight. Like I said, the benefit is huge and the cost is very light, so it's a, it's an obvious decision for me. Councilmember Ray.
Let me come back. Thank you for that, both of you. Clearly, the role in the TOD has changed, no disputing that, but I don't think that's the issue here. I don't think we're asking for public comment on TOD. We're asking for public comment on a parks project, which, and that's why I was asking Director Watling about what would our normal process be. So my dilemma that I'm really wrestling with is a desire for transparency. We talk about that all the time. We talk about getting public input. We tried about doing the people's business, doing the people's business, you know, in front of everybody. And now I'm way in that, which we would have to, a bridge, to get the Vertical Bridge, versus the public need for more affordable housing and some, and human services capabilities. So that's, that's where I think my dilemma, well, I don't think that's where my dilemma, that is where my dilemma is right now, is I have two things that I hold very dear that are in absolute conflict with each other and I can't resolve that conflict easily. So this may be, you know, a game day decision for me.
So if, as this appears to be heading towards a two to one, I would encourage you to take a look at what we did when we looked at putting towers at Confluence. It was a really small, light, easy conversation for something that was as impactful or more than what we're talking about here.
Yeah, and, and thanks, that's, that's spot on and, and I need that at some point. And so it may not be a two to one. It may be a three oh, but it may not be a, you know, seven oh at the next one or whatever, because I need to see that. I need to understand that. So I'm, I'm, I'm good with moving forward, but there's some questions that haven't been answered yet that need to be answered to help me with the, you know, is this consistent with our precedent? Is this consistent with how we've dealt with things like this in the past? Are we treating this particular situation special? And I'm always a little bit leery in city government about making special exceptions for a special case, because it always comes back to bite us. And so we need, I need, we don't need, I need. I need to see that this isn't a, you know, this isn't really an aberration. This is pretty typical. We wouldn't do this in normal situations if we were going to be putting in a 500-square-foot building and an 85-foot tower.
All right. Do we, do you like to make a motion or shall I?
I am happy to make a motion.
Um, I am happy to make a motion. Let's see. Uh, I move that, let's see, I'm sorry. Uh, I move that we approve moving, moving ahead with, uh, negoti- negotiations on, uh, the Tel- the Celtophone Tower relocation at Tibbetts Creek Park. Thank you. Continue lease negotiations and bring lease to the next regular city council meeting for their consideration.
Second. All right, further, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
The clerk would like to interject and ask that the motion be restated so it can be recorded accurately.
Yes, thank you. You wanna show me that again? I move that we continue lease negotiations and bring lease to the next regular city council meeting for their consideration.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It carries three to oh. With that, we will move on to the, uh, second part of our evening, which is ID 1297, King County Housing Authority Interlocal Agreement. Again, Deputy City Administrator Snyder.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Uh, so this, this portion, yes, focuses on that interlocal agreement with King County Housing Authority, or KCHA as it's referred to here. The purpose for us this evening is to get feedback from you on the draft interlocal agreement. Uh, so, uh, does council have any changes that you'd like to see for the draft interlocal agreement? And, uh, should the administration advance the ILA for full council's consideration at the next regular meeting? Those are the direction that we seek from you this evening. The interlocal agreement, or ILA, as you see here, uh, provides at least 155 units of affordable housing for those earning 40 to 60% of area median income. It includes that 10,000-square-foot opportunity center we've talked about, five units reserved for life enrichment options, or LEO, to house people with developmental disabilities, uh, a mix of market rate and affordable housing in accordance with the original vision of the project. So, um, as I said before, there were two buildings envisioned. One was going to be the affordable component and one was gonna have more market rate in it, um, in the, in our local agreement, despite losing one of their partners, KCHA still maintains a commitment to having, uh, market rate apartments, uh, market rate housing as a part of this project. Uh, also as part of the ILA, uh, the draft ILA, there is a stipulation to have the city agree to the land lease for the cell towers. That's why we are covering this item second and the lease first. Uh, so advantages and disadvantages. We talked before about how the, uh, MOU, the memorandum of understanding that the city had with, with the development team, how that was going to be a precursor to, um, the MOU was gonna be a precursor to the development agreement. So this, um, the MOU is non-binding and, uh, without an interlocal agreement, we don't have those obligations of the affordable housing and all those other items we just discussed. There's no obligation for KCHA to develop those things. They could get ownership of the property and, uh, they could then flip it and sell it to the highest bidder if they wanted to. Um, so this formalizes those obligations in the interlocal agreement. Um, the, uh, in addition, it helps formalize the understanding that these public benefits are part of our consideration for compensation for that city lease, uh, just to make sure that, uh, the, these two decisions are tied because they are linked. Uh, we're not just deciding on a, on a cell tower lease in the city park. It's very much related to the TOD project. If the TOD project did not require the cell tower relocation, we wouldn't be considering a cell tower at Tibbetts Valley Park. Um, I, uh, have not been able to identify any disadvantages. The key here is that, uh, to make sure that this interlocal agreement says the things that council wants it to say. And so if it doesn't do that, we need your feedback tonight to let us know what other items should be included in the ILA. So, um, options for this evening, advance the draft ILA to the next regular city council meeting for consideration, potential approval. Another option is to keep negotiating the ILA with these additional considerations as provided by the council committee this evening. Um, or three, do not move forward with the ILA. And of course, the consequence of that is, uh, that, um, that could, again, uh, put an end to our discussions about the transit-oriented development project. Administration's recommendation this evening is to advance the draft ILA to the next regular city council meeting for consideration and potential approval. Timing and next steps. Uh, the administration would seek approval of the interlocal agreement with KCHA at the same time that council considers approval of the Tibbetts Valley Park lease with vertical bridge. Because again, we believe these two things are linked and connected and want to demonstrate that in our process. Pending approval, Lumen and KCHA would then execute their purchase and sale agreement for the future TOD site, transferring ownership and control of the site to King County Housing Authority. And then once KCHA has ownership of the site, they would then begin work on finalizing the design for the TODOC project and begin applying for permits. So again, direction needed for this evening, does council have any changes for the draft ILA and should the administration advance the ILA for full council's consideration? That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Jean-Michel. Oh, no? Okay. But Councilmember Ray, I can tell.
You never know how many you're gonna get either. We're gonna just start with one. Um, so I, I think it's great that we didn't have to do the land swap to make this happen. That certainly simplified everything and, and all that. Um, and I know that we are contributing, um, or buying, uh, condominiumized, uh, part of the final product, which is the 10,000-square-foot, um, opportunity center. What else are we contributing to this? Anything? Is it just, is it just really, we're just buying our chunk of it?
Um, so in the, in the materials for this evening, it links to, uh, other presentations we've given in the past of all of the city's financial contributions enumerated. And so, um, I'm going to do the best that I can to answer that off the top of my head, but I'm also gonna ask, uh, Gene Paul to, uh, to look it up and back me up in case I forget anything. So, there's my advance warning to Gene so he can start his research. Um, so, so yes, the city, uh, has, uh, in the past committed to helping provide financial contribution towards the construction of the opportunity center. We, our latest estimate, which is outdated, is that, that's, uh, five, uh, roughly $5 million. We have achieved some grants to do that. We have set aside funds to do that. Um, so we would be contributing all of those things towards that purchase. The other financial commitment the city has made is one in terms of forgone revenue. So, uh, this is the one project in the Issaquah Municipal Code that would qualify for that multifamily tax exemption. And, um, we have, uh, provided that to this project, should it meet the criteria within the IMC for 12 years. So that would be in terms of, of forgone revenue for 12 years, the MFT. Um, I'm trying to think of any other contributions towards this project other than this, the portion of Tibbetts Valley Park. And I, I think we've just about covered it.
Bosses. Covered the last one.
Uh, thank you. The city administrator, Bob Kowitz, uh, reminds me of the, the hours of staff time and other costs incurred over the past five years, but...
We're gonna call those sunk costs.
And there's been out-of-pocket.
Yeah.
There, there, there has been some out-of-pocket costs, that's true. So in terms of some, uh, appraisals of areas, surveys of areas, things like that, that we've incurred to date, um, I'm gonna ask Gene, since I gave him the heads up, did I forget anything important? And if I did, it looks like maybe Dan has something else to add.
Uh, I think you covered everything from the slides that you referenced in the materials.
Okay, great. Dan, can you, can you chime in if I have forgotten anything else?
So, I think, thank you. Uh, it, it was mentioned that Arch contributed money and part of the money that Arch contributed did come from Issaquah. And, uh, also Issaquah, as it does for all affordable housing projects, is waiving the permitting fees. And so those are additional contributions from the city.
All right, thanks. Um, and, and I'm not gonna ask you to do this tonight, but before we, we bring this back, can you tell me what the MFT for 12 years is gonna cost the city in terms of property tax revenue?
Uh, in fact, I can. What we estimated it to be, uh, at the time that we, that the city council, um, approved of the code revision to allow MFT, at that time, it was estimated to be $1 million over the course of 12 years. That amount has changed, of course, as property taxes has, has changed over that time.
Deputy Administrator Snyder, is it, is it safe to say that it's basically, the OC is $5 million, $3 million of it coming from the state, $1 million of it coming from our, uh, OC, uh, revenue pool and $1 million coming from deferred, or from, uh, forgone revenue?
Uh, the $1 million from forgone revenue, I believe, is incorrect. The MFT is for, is supportive of the affordable housing component regardless of the opportunity center. The other million, uh, that would add up to this $5 million estimate, uh, we have a couple of revenue sources from, uh, the county that we have not fully spent, right? So, I believe that one of them, and forgive me, I'm going to get them confused tonight, um, there is one that is, uh, one of the allowable uses can be towards, um, behavioral health and those types of services. And so, um, I believe we could use those revenues, uh, to support the opportunity center construction if needed.
Right, that's unspent 0.1%, right? That we, that we authorized a couple of years ago?
That's correct, yes, thank you.
Okay. So, so there would be no impact to general fund in doing this? Or with the estimates that were in place with the caveat that you said that those estimates are not, are a bit stale?
Yes, from everything we know today, that is what we believe. We would need to have updated estimates. King County Housing Authority, um, has not provided updated estimates until they get land control. Because doing estimates, uh, requires a lot of investment as well. So they're seeking land control and some certainty before they invest more in this project. So as we talk about, once they get land control and finalized design, we'll be able, uh, to have a better understanding of what those costs might be.
Thank you. Other questions? No. So I will ask if anyone has signed up for this item in particular.
Uh, Chair Martz, no one has signed up for this item in particular.
Has anyone indicated online that they wish to speak to this topic?
No one online has indicated a desire to speak to this topic.
Then I will offer those in the audience the opportunity to speak to this issue if you are so inclined.
So of course, we don't get the impact fees, so we're gonna be taking away a chunk of park, but we aren't gonna be getting any impact fees to then buy anything for the people who are gonna be living in this facility to use the park. Just a, a little tidbit. The other thing that I think is disturbing in the agreement is there is the, uh, conversation about we're going to try to maintain the goal of having a variety of housing levels altogether because the city has been pretty clear that they don't want just isolated spots of low-income housing, they want a variety. Yet in the agreement, it basically seems to allow one extra unit and that would fulfill that vision. And so I found that very unclear and uncompelling. So I'm not sure if I missed some three paragraphs that described this commitment in the agreement, uh, but I don't think that can be a verbal commitment. And I think that we actually want to have some, some succinct language that is, I don't know if implementable is the word, but it describes very clearly what, what we're aiming for in that agreement. And, and so that is not there. The, um, process has already begun for this project. It's just very behind on the active projects list. We have critical area studies that have, in theory, already been begun. And, and so, so far, this project has not followed any normal process. It's followed a, a public project process being approved by the city council for something that now has to go through a private project approval, which is super awkward in, in the world of, you have a private project that the city council has already swammed over and said, "We want it." So what does that even do when your development commission and all of these other bodies trying to make decisions when the council has already said yes? Uh, it's very confusing and I don't, I think it, I think it's chilling to the public good. Uh, the public has, again, has no idea that this has changed from the last two years. The city is still putting in a bunch of money, no matter who it's from, it's city money, and the public has not had a chance to comment and say what they would actually like to see, what they would like to have as part of this agreement. And it's here, it's going to a council meeting with no further outreach with a $5 million public investment. And, again, that is not a normal private project that just goes through the private process because the city in general does not give private developers $5 million for fun, right? It's not the same thing. I, and I know because I've been through many private and many public, okay? So, I know you want it and my, my point is, I don't care how much somebody wants something. It's got to have the same process for everyone. Single-family people need the same known process as some great public entity that's gonna do great things. People just need to have the same consistent pathways every time. And this one has blown that out of the water in the past. I don't know how you're gonna gather it together because, and I guess this is the, the worst thing, it feels like there is no changing it. Even if you were the most compelling public person, council often comes to these things with their minds already made up, no matter what a person would say. And I, I can't tell you how disheartening it is and it makes me go home and cry. So, I don't know how, that you know that this public really cares about its city. It's just really hard to interface with it and not feel like you're rejected when you comment. I don't think you understand that to the tips of your toes anymore. So, I appreciate the thoughts, um, and the cautions and I hope you consider bringing it to a more complete public conversation.
Would anyone else care to speak to this issue this evening? Would anyone else? Third time. All right, we'll go to, uh, discussion. We should probably make a motion before we, uh, discuss that motion. So, uh, I will make a motion. Uh, I move we advance the draft ILA to the regular city council meeting on November 21st for consideration and potential approval.
Uh, I'll second that motion.
Discussion. Well, I'll dive, okay, I'll, I'll dive in.
All right.
Um, so, uh, this has had a funny pedigree. There's no question about it. It, 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 it was built as one thing five years ago and it morphed into a different thing, and then it morphed into a different thing, and now it's a yet different thing. Um, I, I will say that I do believe there has been a lot of public engagement on the subject of a transit-oriented development and an associated opportunity center. And I say that because there was a point where we had a vote, and it was a four to three vote, to continue going forward with this project. Um, and, and we heard a lot from a lot of folks in the community. That is, it is, it is true, it is a different proposal than it looks like today, uh, but there is, there is a rich history on this one, um, dating, of course, from 2017, so five years ago. Um, and, uh, I come back to what I said on the first measure, which is, um, if you see a value in doing TOD here and doing an opportunity center... here and doing an opportunity center, I do, I do think it's interesting, this question about whether, what fraction of market rate it is. And so I certainly think that would be something that would be value, it would be valuable to have a little bit more clarity on for the, for going forward to the full council. I mean, I'm going to support this this evening. But this question on the likelihood of it being a mix of market rate and subsidized, I think is a, is, would be valuable to have a conversation with the full council. Other, other comments? Councilmember Ray? Oh, or Councilmember D. Michelle?
Oh, I'll just say, yeah, I was, in 2017, you were on the council. I was out there in the audience. I was one of the people that testified in favor of this project. I was for 10 years on the Together Center Board and participated in the development of that project in Redmond, which is very much nearing its completion. I think it's going to open sometime next year. And the, these are just really elegant projects, but they are difficult in that you have to negotiate. And a lot of those negotiations occur behind the scenes. And they have to, in many ways. You're dealing with legal entities and legal agreements that need confidentiality, or they don't happen, or they actually put the city at jeopardy if they were being discussed in public. So I know that's maybe hard for people to understand. I have a dim understanding, I'm looking at Mr. Landis again, I have a dim understanding of why the federal government requires you to put housing together, like your 40% to 60% AMI. You get a better tax break because it's all together. Maybe you could explain that to us a little bit better. But I think that, I know that the council has, has hoped that we would have intermingled housing market and, and that may not be possible because it forecloses the opportunity for federal support. But I could be wrong about that. So maybe it would be better to ask an expert on that. But overall, I, of course, I approve this. And I, I think that the interlocal agreement gives us a stronger position because it specifies exactly what, you know, what we are agreeing to with King County Housing Authority. So, thank you.
Councilmember Ray?
Three, three things. One is we absolutely, positively have to have an ILA because we don't have a development agreement. And we have nothing other than, you know, a verbal agreement and a hearty handshake from, from credible people. But trust but verify, I think, was the, the, the line. So yes, must have an ILA. So next question then is really about what to put, what is missing from it? I would like to see some more definitive language around the integration of the market rate and the affordable housing units, you know, how that's going to be so we have a clear understanding. And it may not be optimal, but it'll be overt. So let's just put it out there. And, you know, if we, if, you know, it's not optimal, it's not optimal, it's just what it is. But let's be overt about it. And then the second thing is, I would like to see a not-to-exceed cap put on the opportunity center. So we talked about, you know, it's five, it's six, you know, is it $20 million? I don't know. But I'd like to see the ILA include some sort of a not-to-exceed cap on the cost for the opportunity center. Because right now, the way it's written, we, we've got a, we've got a blank check that we're, we're writing to our, I have nothing but admiration for our partners, but I'm also, you know, I worry about things like this. So I'd like to, you know, I'm not sure I care too much about what your cap is or what the cap is, but it's got to be capped at something.
All right. Before we take a vote on this, if, if, if we voted this, has the administration gotten the feedback that it wants this evening on this subject?
I believe we have, and I'd like to say a few words after the vote, but yes, thank you.
All right. Any further comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That passes three to O. Thank you. City Administrator?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Martz, members of the committee. I think back in my 30-plus years of working in local government, of times when city councils I have worked with have set big goals and have set big projects. And it's quite honestly, not that often. This one was one of them, where the council had a public process, had a vision, and then said to your able city staff, "Go figure it out." When I arrived in 2019, Councilmember Martz took me aside and said, "So what's going on with TODOC? Haven't heard much about it in the last year or so." And the reality at that point was that it was a difficult project then, it's remained a difficult project. But in 2019, it was not coming together because of all the reasons you've heard enumerated this evening. Andrea Schneider, after, fresh off her role as interim city administrator, looking for new projects, I said, "Why don't you take a look at this one and see what we can do?" For the next three years, this has been a central part of what she has worked on, through a pandemic, through CenturyLink becoming LUMEN, through LUMEN changing their business needs, all of those things. But all goes back to this council's view that this was important, that this was a parcel of land that could help move a lot of things forward. And I just want to take a moment to recognize Andrea for the work that she's done. It's very, very infrequent you can say about any city project that one person, we all want to talk about teams, not this one. Andrea made this happen through her dogged determination because this city council said, "This is important for this community." You know, there were comments made tonight about public participation. There was lots of public participation. I was not here for it, but it's well documented. And this city council said to the administration, "Get it done." And so we're very proud to be here and saying, "We're getting it done." That the amount of public benefit that this project provides, I mean, you'd be hard-pressed in any community to find the sheer amount of dollars, but it's more than dollars. It's helping people who need it, helping them in a way. There's a large transit center right down the street. I mean, is it a block, Andrea? It's a block? Not even a block. So this council had a vision that this community, Councilmember D. Michelle said, "You were on the other side, you were in the audience." So I, I don't want anyone listening to this public process this evening, this full discussion of the issue this evening, to think that this, this wasn't a public process. It was. Unfortunately, we had a pandemic. It took a long time, but we're here tonight moving it forward. And so I just want to take an opportunity to make sure anyone who's listening this evening understands that this isn't something that's been done in the shadows. This is something implementing a direction of the Issaquah Washington City Council. And your staff and the administration is proud that we've been able to do it, and very particularly that Andrea Schneider was able to lead this and bring this together. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to get on a soapbox for just a moment. But I think it's important that those watching in the community truly understand that not everything gets done with two public meetings and you're finished. This was a multi-year project. It was important to have happened. It was very hard to do. But at the end of the day, many, many, many Issaquah residents will benefit from it, our, our transit system leveraging that. All the things we all aspire to know, as your staff and as well as the council, is going to happen. And I couldn't, as your city administrator, be more proud.
Thank you very much for your comments, City Administrator. Do we have any announcements before we adjourn? I don't. Thank you, everyone here, and thank you, everyone at home. And with that, we are adjourned.